Hello and welcome everybody to the City of Isani City Council Budget Work Session for Tuesday, July 21st. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I make a motion to adjourn.
All council members are present minus Councilman Burgley. He had to leave for a prior commitment. Any public comment? Alright. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Collison and a second from Councilman Lundino. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Work session F1, the 2021 Budget Schedule. Short and sweet, Mr. Becker.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Presentation will mostly just follow through this condensed packet, but for your information, you've got smaller version, you've got the 20-year capital improvement plan for Funds 920, 614, 425, and 440. Then we've also got the operating budget for 101, 108 in detail. I won't go over the minute details of either of those documents, just kind of, we'll just hit the highlights, but if at any time there are any questions or concerns about anything in the detail, either today or in the future, well, I'm a finance director, so I'd love to address that. First things first, 2021 budget schedule. We're in the first work session here. We'll have a second budget work session on August 5th. A third would be only if council deems necessary, and then that would follow with the second meeting in August. Preliminary budget meeting and action to set the preliminary levy that occur at the first meeting in September. Then the first meeting in December, we would set the final levy and final budget. What I've prepared here today is basically based on council goals that we've talked about and made clear in the past, projects that we want to get done. We want to have that tax rate being steady or slowly decreasing. And of course, I've brought it up before and I'll bring it up again, is good fiscal management is not double-digit increases or decreases. We want that tax rate going slow and steady. If it has to go up, fine, but let's have it go up in small amounts. If it has to go down, let's have it go down in small amounts. If we start raising and lowering it by 10, 15, 20%, we probably did something wrong a couple of years before. Page four of the packet, proposed 2021 total levy is just shy of 3 million. That is a 10% increase over the 2020 budget, but market values have increased quite a bit. The largest increases by percent that you see and by dollar amount are in the capital maintenance levy for 920 and the street construction levy for Fund 425. If you remember, the increase for Fund 425 is because we did take some of that levy money out last year in order to get the tax rate we wanted last year. Projected tax rate for 2021, under the presented budget, would be flat. We would stay at 61.18. That's well below the 15-year average of 67.6. I'll keep moving along here. Okay, if there are any questions, please interrupt.
I have one question, sir.
Yeah?
So, we can keep the tax rate the same and because of the increase in property values, we're going to see that 9.79% increase in the revenue?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, so basically, the nice thing when you do have a perfectly flat tax rate, or at least that's the projection, the nice thing is that if any residents have any questions about, well, my property taxes went up, my property taxes went down, the simple answer is the value of your home changed. If we keep the tax rate the same, the only time your taxes go up, at least city taxes, right? Because it's only a portion of the tax bill. The only time your city taxes go up is if your property value went up.
My answer is I encourage you to go see Mike Becker at City Hall.
That's a very good answer if you've got, if somebody's got questions. That is absolutely the right answer.
I say it all the time.
I could probably answer their questions in just a few minutes, otherwise we can talk for two hours and...
Well, who's he? He's the finance director. Knows everything.
Yeah, so and to your point, that's the rea- I focus on tax rate, and I'll do that every year because comparing tax levies doesn't really do anybody any good because they will go up over time just because of inflation. So they don't provide a good comparison, but that tax rate takes the inflation out of it and gives you a much better comparison year to year, decade to decade.
Just keep going, Mr. Becker. If we have questions, we'll stop you as we go.
Yep. General Fund Operating Budget, page six. This is just the category summary. Of course, you've got the detail in there. You can see every nook and cranny of that. Right now, general fund revenues exceed the budgeted expenditures by 54,000. As it's sitting right now, just to soon keep that cushion in, there's a few things out there that concern me. One, I don't know what the health insurance renewal rate will be. Right now, I'm projecting only 5%, but my gut tells me it'll probably be negative. Healthcare, consumer healthcare spending has been down so much in the first and second quarter that I can't imagine we'll have an increase for the year, but we'll see how that goes. The other item would be, currently in this budget, we've got 84,000 for SRO reimbursement, which obviously is up in the air. Don't know if we're going to have an SRO in the school or if they'll be full-time. How well that would work, so having that $54,000 cushion might prove helpful as we move forward in the budget process. If there are items that, budget adjustments to consider on page seven, this is just kind of the, you know, the high-level view. There are lots of adjustments in the budget that we really maybe want to make but can't, right? We've got union contracts, we've got vendor contracts, utilities that we don't have control over, all kinds of things that we aren't going to be able to adjust, and they just are the reality that they are. But there are some adjustments there to, for potential reductions, and I did add one potential addition simply because that is an item that had been previously discussed and the council may choose to add that back in if we felt like we needed a more enhanced fireworks display. Page eight is General Fund Capital Budget Summary. This is in Fund 920, and all I've listed out here is the planned expenditures for 2021 and planned revenues for 2021. The one-year budget is a negative 55,000, but that's fine. That's a one-year budget. That's not the running total. And even at the end of the year, we'll still have over 600 grand. So this is maybe the, this is kind of the big part of this. We had a lot of changes to the capital improvements plan in Fund 920 based on the goals that the council identified. One is we've got the addition in 2025 of a public services building and salt shed. That's going to be a more than $2 million project with the general fund or property tax levy share being 782,000. The rest of that is paid by the enterprise funds. Enterprise funds always have to pay their own way, so they will transfer in to cover the remaining cost on that. 2023, I've got scheduled a splash pad in Bluebird Park at 218,000. 2021, I've got Bluebird Park Restrooms scheduled for 206,000. Also in 2021, Bluebird Park Performance Center at 248,000. And Jason and I have discussed ad nauseam that he cannot let the restrooms be too far away from the splash pad because, if you remember, there is a certain number of feet that's got to be at, and even though those projects would happen apart, we've got our eye on that one. We've also added streetlight infill. That was discussed not that long ago, so we're adding that in. Street sign replacement, this is one where we'd cycle it through. We'd do $4,000 a year inflation adjusted for three years. Then we'd take a few years off and then re-up that. We also, for 2024, we changed the snowplow purchase to a grader purchase. We've decided that we simply cannot take the roads down to what they need to be without the grader, so that added $60,000. We have some deletions. These have been noted to the council before, in part to pay for some of the improvements in Bluebird Park. I have taken out Isani Hills Equipment and Fence, saving 68,000. We took out City Hall Cubicles, Whisper Ridge Tennis Court resurfacing, not the reconstruction, but the resurfacing, VFW Park Equipment, and we've revised the hoist truck down to just a standard truck, saving some money on that one as well. Yep.
Did we discuss eliminating some of the parks? I know we discussed that one time, Ms. Wood, too, and you maybe elaborate. Did we look at eliminating some of these parks, like the VFW Park, rolling that back into them and taking that money and transferring it over to something at Bluebird?
So, I'm going to have to jump in here because I was at the last park and rec meeting, and I did mention that. Councilman Gordon was there. He didn't disagree with what I said, that it's not a bad idea to shift some of that money into Bluebird Park. However, I didn't say, I did mention giving, how did I put it? Do we want to hand the VFW Park back to the VFW and then shift money to the Bluebird Park, to Grandstand Bluebird Park? I don't know why my mic keeps going on and off. I kind of lit a fire under that boards fanny by saying that? And they said that they would look at ways to spend less money.
I don't know how they can do that because they're paying, releasing that land, aren't we?
They were really open to the idea of letting the VFW take that. I mean, I agree with you in the sense that I want to cut the funding to pay for the VFW Park. I don't know where that funding should go necessarily, but I think they were on board too with Isani Hills Park, doing something different there.
The green space or like, somebody mentioned, we could just put dirt. Apparently, in some city, there's like a big mound of dirt and people playing it all day, every day.
Kind of thing or something like that.
Like it's a big sandbox or something. I don't know, but it's a cheap method.
A climbing hill or something, yeah.
Yeah, this discussion is, you were seeing the beginnings of this reflected in this budget. This is why we have the additions in Bluebird Park, the splash pad, amphitheater, and the restrooms, and we see deletions at Isani Hills, Whisper Ridge, and VFW Park, right? The net expenditures to parks is an increase, right? I mean, nobody could say that we've just gutted parks. We are spending more on parks, but in addition to spending more, we are shifting it, right? It's sort of the idea that if I have a lot of parks that in total cost me a million dollars over 20 years, I can spread that out into a little tiny bit all over the place, or I can take at least some of that and put it toward one bigger, more central park that has more amenities than I would otherwise be able to afford at multiple smaller parks.
What do we pay the VFW to lease that park?
We don't really. It's like, it's an agreement. I think it was set like at a dollar, like when we leased to Redbirds and stuff like that. I'd have to look back. It's a really old agreement, like the 1980s, I feel like, or something. It's quite old. I haven't read it in a long time, so I'd have to, we'd have to pull it back up or share at Park Board to see what they want to do. As far as I remember, the fence is theirs, the land is theirs. They allowed us to put the playground equipment on there and to maintain it. So, we'd have to look back at the agreement to see how we would give it back.
And if they don't want to take it over, why don't we put the playground equipment elsewhere?
Well, part of the thing with that equipment, as well as Isani Neighborhood Hills, is that you can't get parts. It's obsolete. There are already safety hazards. It would be to take the equipment down and do something else that Park Board needs to decide at that time. We'd find funding for that if that's what they want to do, but as Mike mentioned, the CIP has been modified to reflect the changes of taking those park replacement equipment out of it.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I just saw that number, Mike. Did I just see like $363,000 a year on park rec and culture?
Where are you looking?
General Fund Operating Budget Summary, Fund 101. You don't have page numbers on here, so...
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, inside of the operating revenue. Yep. In the operating budget, that would be an accurate number.
Oh, it's on page seven.
Well, you, no, you, so when you're looking at page six and you see that 363,000, that represents the operating budget that is in this thick document. Inside of here, you'll find that.
Okay.
You'll see all the excruciating detail perhaps, but it surely is in there. And if there are any concerns about that, again, we're early in the process, so I mean, we don't need to make any final decisions till December.
Some of these that you have kind of budget adjustments to consider that would be cutting some things, I mean, do we want to discuss that now or do we have time to kind of mull that over and...
We can discuss it now, but you also have plenty of time to mull it over. It's nice if we have a pretty good idea what we want to do before we approve the preliminary levy because remember, the preliminary levy, once we set that, we can't raise it. We can lower it. We could even give ourselves wiggle room and artificially set it 5% high just in case as an insurance policy and then just bump it down in December, but you can't go back up. That's the caveat there.
I mean, I guess I'm all for every single one of those cuts. I don't know how you guys feel about them, but...
Hey, there's one here. Councilman Lundin just pointed out as a Isani Hills Equipment and Fence, 68,000.
Yep.
Delete.
Yeah, that, yeah, that is listed as, that has been removed from the capital improvements plan. That was presented in last year.
Oh, it's a deletion.
That is a deletion.
Okay.
So, yeah, the bottom section there are the deletions. Those are items that had been previously presented in the 2021 budget and scheduled for some future year and have now been taken off, rather than asking the council to go through the entire document line by line and try to figure that out.
I was wondering more about the page above that, I think, that...
Yep, no, yeah.
Two pages above it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Councilman Gordon is looking at page seven, and this would be budget adjustments. That should be to the operating budget and the general fund on page seven.
Eliminating additional police secretary? What?
The 2021 budget has an additional police secretary in it. This is, essentially, this is to be prepared for somebody else's potential retirement.
Oh, okay.
That may or may not be coming at some point.
Wow.
And we really don't know about that, so...
Right.
Just...
I do have a, now I just see the next line. You have five reduced PD cellphone count. You only have one duty phone, chief. Where's the other four coming in?
Me, myself, Lieutenant, the investigator, and Brian Sabo, who's on the SRT team who needs it for his emergency call-outs. And then one general phone.
I'd rather, geez, I'd rather see one more added to them than taken away.
No, so that, right now, the 2640, that's five lines, are currently in the budget. That's five additional lines over and above what is current right now.
Oh, okay.
So you could say...
Disregard.
Yeah, you could say we don't need five lines or we only need some portion or whatever.
You need one, you need another one, though?
What's that?
You need more lines? So you're scheduled to have five more, but you need...
Five additional.
Yep. There's twofold because it's either going to come in a cellphone or it's going to come in, we do digital recorders and cameras, so everybody's issued one of them, so we add five more, we'll eliminate that camera.
Which is a cheaper end, Councilman Gordon, than video cameras recorders.
Well, do we want video camera recorder?
No, it'd be digital cameras.
Digital cameras.
Like for taking evidence pictures and digital recording, which they're all issued those, so it'd be...
They can just use a department phone for that instead.
There is, I would like to add in, there has been a big shift to have it so officers are not using their personal cellphones at all.
And that's the other thing as well.
That's how those cellphones came to be for officers, and I do agree, it's very important to make sure.
I've advised my officers not to carry their cellphones and encourage them not to carry their personal cellphones just because of this, well, obviously, they can't use them for any work-related, so you can't say an officer, if they, officer doesn't, if you have two officers on, we have one squad cellphone to go back and forth.
Which really, I feel like they should have two, but they only got one.
They want a squad car.
Yeah.
Because they can't use their personal cellphones.
Well, not one in each squad car, but at least the one.
If you got two on at the time.
You got two cops on, you should have two phones.
Yeah, right. You know, it's a sheriff phone, yeah.
Right.
Well, so I just, I'd like to see a four lines cut then, I guess, if that's, okay, instead of all five, but...
And back to the police secretary piece, I pulled up my staffing memo. We're at the same staffing level for administrative assistants since 2005, so we're at the same amount. So even adding this in preparation of somebody retiring, if you think about it, for the last 15 years, we've had the same administrative assistant staffing load, which is 60 hours a week since 2005. You know, and obviously, just in the last six years, our call load's gone up 50%. I didn't go back to 2005, but obviously, we can extrapolate numbers of officers and everything else since 2005.
And then we're reducing code enforcement hours?
So remember, so remember, these are, these are all items that are currently in the budget and just high-level items that you could consider. If you wanted to further reduce the budget, you could take these items out.
Oh, we're not necessarily doing it. It's just a suggestion.
Police secretary is in, but you could choose to take that out. These extra five lines are in, but you could choose to take them out. The additional code enforcement hours would take Jed from 20 hours a week to 29. So is that marginal difference? We'd want to hold them under the 30, but, so you could just say, well, no, that 20 hours has worked out fine and realize the savings of 10,217.
So these are all scheduled, but do we really need all of these?
Yeah, it's just to help the council understand, here are some, you know, so you don't have to peel through 80 pages. Here are some items that have been added that are relatively new that you could consider.
And just to be clear, these items were added or in here because of their staff's request. So we all have budget meetings with, Mike and I, I should say, have budget meetings with all of our department head staff, and these are requests that they have made to make their departments function better, more efficiently, to get a better job done for the services for Isani.
Okay, with that being said then, chief, why would you request to reduce officer wellness?
He's not. He wants all these in.
Okay, I was going to say, geez, if anything, we should be jacking that up, not lowering.
Officer wellness is in there for $7,200. You could, it's a new item, right? So you might say, we've done fine without it. We don't need that. Take it out. But right now, $7,200 is in the budget for officer wellness. That is in the budget currently.
I'm so confused in what's here and what's not, I guess. This is...
That page is added. You can remove these if we see fit.
Exactly.
Mayor and council, just like, just to clarify, so what staff did is they came up with a list of items. If council said, you know what, we don't want a flat rate. We need to reduce it even further. We want to cut the projects that were listed on the other sheets or potentially find other staff. Where are you going to make cuts? This was the list that was come up with of requests that staff has made, but that you may say, maybe you want to get rid of it because you want to hit X amount for tax levy.
Yeah, this is...
So we could potentially, if we wanted to, take $500 off of compo screening? Okay, now I'm with you. Now I can...
Yeah, this is a different layout and format than we've presented at budget workshops in the past, but I, you know, I tried to put this together in a way that I think is a little more concise and hopefully is a little easier for the council to understand without having to dig through 80 pages of fine, you know, small print, be able to give some basic understanding.
Well, obviously, it's working. Your Finance for Dummies 101 is working on me here. I'm getting it. $8,000.
That would be a potential addition. I only added that in because we had discussed a larger fireworks display, and at the time I was putting this together, the fireworks show hadn't happened yet.
Did you guys see that display?
I thought it was really, it was short, but it was really...
It was really good. Now what if we went 15 minutes, the same thing?
I mean, I thought it was good.
What'd you say?
You lie. You so lie. I didn't see one smiley face. You lie. Everybody told me it was great. It was just too short.
I mean, in the sky.
That's what I said. Were you looking in the sky? And then this laughed, but I think 15 minutes same show would be great. But alright, moving on. Sorry, Mr. Becker.
So that'd be an addition the council could consider. We don't have to do that tonight, but if you want to add that into your mind, we can address that at the next budget workshop or in September or at any time in between, really. I talked about page eight, the summary for the capital improvements. We went through the, on page nine, we went through the list of things that we've added to the plan and things that we have taken out that had previously been on. Page 10 is General Fund Technology Budget and Fund 614. Again, we're just listing out the planned expenditures predominantly for computers, although we do have, we are set up for $12,000 for a new server that's scheduled. And we had a couple of items that we took off of that capital plan as well. Then we've got the, page 11, I've got a very brief summary for EDA revenues. The only thing to note on this, EDA expenditures exceed the revenues by 125,000. That is not an accident. That is absolutely on purpose. Right now, the EDA is sitting on quite a bit more cash than $125,000. The EDA is a fund that should be operating at break-even, hover around zero year after year after year, but after Mr. Sullivan left, we kind of didn't spend a lot of money for a long time, and we've managed to stockpile some additional funds, so we're going to transfer that money back into the general fund, so...
Awesome.
Then...
Going to go a long way toward a new liquor store.
Ooh.
Well, the transfer from the EDA goes into the general fund, so that really is for operating. It's not going to Fund 920, so... It's not going to...
I'm coming around. Steve and I had a long talk.
Page 12, Debt Service Fund Budget Summary. This is not something that's been presented in the past, but it's clear that the council's goal is not issuing debt and getting to a point where we're debt-free. So I put this summary in here, gave some, some just really high-level notes below that to help understand when the debt service payments end, and so there's at least a little bit of background on there so the council members understand where we're at with those items.
What's a police station tower?
Computer.
Oh, yeah. Tower refers to the form factor, so it'd be a tower or a small form factor or a laptop. So it's listing what is currently the case.
You better remember, towers aren't discussed anymore. It's all laptop rite-ends.
Yeah, that's like outdated. What's a tower? That would be a hard drive or a laptop in my era, Mike. Come on.
Alright, page 13, Pavement Management Project for 2021. We're scheduled for a budget for 316. I was talking to Jason. Sounds like we should be under that. I've listed out what that project currently includes. We've got Third Ave north of Isani Parkway. Isani Parkway, I can read through the list there, but that's what we scheduled for 2021. That's paid out of Fund 440. Street Construction, Fund 425. We've got levy dollars coming in on that. And 2021, we are scheduled to do Main Street Reconstruction from Whiskey Road to Fourth Avenue. That council already knew about.
That's the street I live on.
Yep.
It's my taxes.
And that is, that is what we discussed last year. But what is, what's been added since the last time is Eagle Park Parking Improvements, right? Back over across the street, and Heritage Boulevard Walk Improvements from Hill Oak to Third Ave. So that's something that had been on Bolton and Mink's list back in 2010 or '12 when they put that list together, but I had not previously presented those items.
Oh, okay. There's a street no walk there, no walk.
Yeah, so this would be up here where kind of you got the, was it, three or four parcels in a row there that...
You take a right and you're going into the mobile, you take a...
Yep.
Yeah, 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 I know what you're talking about.
So we've got that, and then of course, we've got, we continue to have money set aside for the Heritage and East Dual intersection for our share, or our projected share of that.
Here's all I'm going to say here, Mike, is I, for one, truly, I trust you and Pam. I know you both know what you're doing, and I don't hesitate to, if I have any question, and I would also recommend the council to do the same, that if they had any questions, just outright come and ask you because neither one of you are afraid to answer them. But we know what's going on. I mean, I wasn't kidding when I rather just said, hey, budget looks good, let's go home. Because that's how confident I am in the both of you, so... And if there's any red flags, I was thinking about buying you a helmet with a little red light on it so you can just push the button. light on it, so you can just push a button, and your red light would go, then we'd.
I appreciate that. Only thing I'm going to close on, capital improvements, we had some big changes, we've talked about the liquor store rehab, we've got that queued up for 2025, right now, we're looking at one-point-one-five-nine million to rehab that store. To my mind, that should be enough to be able to put in some, some additional pavement, garage, and get the, get some walls up inside of an otherwise blank building, shouldn't be a.
How much?
One-point-one-five.
To rehab it to the police station.
Rehab the existing liquor store building, by then, of course, it would be empty, maybe a shell by then, by the time we would start working, and so that would be the starting point, and the goal.
And that one-point-one would be?
That would be to rehab the interior.
Right, but what I'm saying is, selling, the building would go into that one-point-one, so really.
That's part of the money, yep.
So we'd really only be giving up four-hundred thousand, really, right?
Well, plus our.
Give or take.
Yeah, yeah, that's one, yeah, one way to think about that.
More admin tickets, chief.
So we've currently got that queued up for 2025. Other big change, public services building, we've managed to work that in, and also into 2025, that's at two-point-six million, and that's, is, doing that is without debt, it's, I mean, that's the, the enterprise fund's paying their share, general fund paying their share, that'll be the public services building and the salt shed, and that's a, that's a number that's adjusted for inflation based on the 2020 estimate, so it should be.
The only debt we're looking at is the liquor store project.
The liquor store project, and that'll be, that'll be the revenue bonds, or if we decide the, the cost of issuing those bonds and the interest rate is too high, then we would do tax abatement bonds.
But the liquor store fund will pay for that.
Yep.
Before.
Liquor store revenues pay for that, that's not a tax, that's not a tax levy thing, no. No. And of course, I'm going to reiterate again, we got the Performance Center at Bluebird Park in 2021, and also the restrooms in 2021, then the splash pad in Bluebird Park in 2023. The cost on that splash pad is assuming that we are not going to be reusing the water. Remember, if we're going to decide that we want to have that wastewater system set up with that, it does inflate that cost dramatically. The way to make that work is simply, the water fund is simply just not going to charge for that money.
Water the grass.
Water the grass.
It's going to be a lot of water out the door, but.
Water the grass with it.
That's how we make that work, substantively, the amount of water that that splash pad could possibly go through relative to the total amount of water that the water fund is supplying, I don't see it having a dramatic impact on, on the water fund itself, so. Only other thing I'll mention is that in Fund four twenty-five, we have, we previously came with ten years of projects, Jason and I have gone through that, we're now out, we have, we have projects now going out to 2056 that include every single road in the city with two seal coats and a millon overlay, and then eventually a reconstruct, but the reconstrucks currently don't have to start until 2056, but we might move some of them up to the extent that state aid would simply pay for it anyway, and we would just not be out any money anyhow, but, so we're, we look pretty decent.
If we were kept, and I know there was one, there was a street maintenance program prior to when it came out. There was. There was a street program, maintenance program prior to the previous mayor.
No, there was not.
Yeah, there was.
Mr. Becker?
The only plan that I'm aware of was one that was adopted in, I think it was worked on in 2010, probably adopted in 2011 or 12, and then we really didn't do any of it. That went out just ten years, which, as the council's gathered, is not my recommendation. I think if you don't look out twenty years, I don't think you really know far enough ahead of time to really avert disaster on, on, on multimillion-dollar projects.
That wasn't yours.
So we expanded that list of town, Jason and I, and have now run it out, and we have accounted for all of the roads, and when they would be scheduled for, for seal coats or a millon overlay or what have you, going out to 2056. There's still some financial hiccups, you know, when we get out into the 2050s, but obviously, that's why you do it, is so that you've got thirty years to figure it out, so.
But what I was saying was, when Mayor Apitz was mayor, he had a street maintenance program set up that it got used for other, it got renamed and used.
Well.
By my predecessor.
Yeah.
Council could certainly choose, choose to do that, that won't be my recommendation, but council could certainly choose to do that.
But that's what happened, and if we would have done that, and kept that fund in there, or kept that money where it should have been, we wouldn't be doing a lot of rebuilding roads.
Yep.
And that's the whole purpose of the street maintenance program is, you know, the seal coating, you know, putting down the gravel, you know, maintaining it, and give that road an extra five to ten years longevity.
Yep.
So, that's why it's so important, so.
Absolutely, I can't agree more.
Anything else you got for us, Mr. Becker?
Only if anyone's got questions.
Any questions by the council?
I don't know.
Make, make a motion to adjourn.
Well, before we adjourn, I'd like to say, very good job, Mr. Becker.
Good job, Mike.
Thank you.
And again, I have full confidence in you, you would be red flag in it, you or Pam would be if there was an issue, so keep up the good work, both of you, you're very well appreciated. I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collins, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four-zero, therefore, we stand adjourned.